So just like to say a very warm welcome. My name's Jill Park and I'm a Vice President of PPMA, but I'm also Assistant Director for HR Communications at Doncaster Council. Before we run through, I'd just like to do a bit of housekeeping for those who are not familiar. And I do want to let you know the session is being recorded. That's purely for, to be helpful for the speakers after the event. You will be put on mute unless you've got a question, of course, we can sort that out. And also, if you can put your cameras on, that's really helpful for the speakers, so they can actually see you as well. And we do encourage you to put some questions in the chat box. If we've got chance through the session, we will answer some of those as we go through. If not, we'll do those at the end. And also our colleagues will follow up on those if they can after the webinar. So it was a great pleasure today to introduce this session as part of our PPMA Award Winners through 2022. And today we're joined by Michael Salmon and Amy Power from Manchester City Council. And they're going to share with you today their approach, experience and practice in being awarded winner of the Best Inclusion and Diversity Programme and Initiative. So I hope you enjoy this session and over to you, Michael. Thanks a lot.
Good afternoon, everybody. Lovely to be here and to be able to share some of our work with you. Myself and Amy Power here today. I'm going to lead on the presentation and Amy's going to be on hand just to support me with the chat and answering things. We're a bit of a duo. We work as part of a much bigger servicing team that has really helped to drive forward some of the work that we've been doing on the workforce quality, strategy and delivery. So I'm going to share my screen shortly and you probably won't be able to see me or I won't be able to see you. So I'll be trying to kind of navigate my way through and look at the chat as well. But we should hopefully have some time at the end for some quick comments and questions. I try and go at a pace, but if I am going too fast at any point, just let me know. So I will get started and share my screen. Forgive me as well, we use Teams at Manchester City Council, so if anything doesn't go right straight ahead, it's because I'm used to working on Teams.
I think there's an implication there that he gets it right on Teams all the time.
So can everyone see that presentation? Can someone just shout out and say, yes, we can see it all and you can't?
Yeah.
Brilliant, brilliant. So just starting off. Yeah, so I am going to talk to you about our approach to our workforce equality strategy and what we're doing now and what we're delivering. And by no means are we saying that we've got everything right or we've completely cracked it. As you know, when you work in a quality diverse inclusion, you're always working to kind of push and move things forward and to make progress. But a quality diverse inclusion is a much broader societal issue. So as an organisation, you're always managing things that happen around you too. So some things I say today will be about the approach we've taken, what we've learned, what we've got wrong, what we need to improve on and what we're hoping to do next. And hopefully you'll see how that's all come together in terms of a kind of coherent and kind of collaborative approach that we've got with our, with our staff. But I like to start with first just telling you a little bit about myself. I've just realised that my name is in the middle of a love heart. It's not me completely just being in love with myself. It's just symbolising the things that I love the most. So I love Manchester, born and raised in Manchester, grew up in inner city Manchester and have worked for the council for over 20 years. Originally came to Manchester City Council as a youth worker, which is the picture towards the left. And this was an urban music showcase that we ran, similar to X Factor. So think, think X Factor, but for inner city young people who just got the opportunity to showcase some of their skills. And we managed to take over two and a half thousand young people to the Bridgewater Hall, which if you've never come across before, is much more of a classical musical venue. And we brought 2,500 young people there and gave them the opportunity to perform and watch a show there, which was fantastic. And it kind of symbolises what I've always been kind of passionate about, creating opportunities for people, particularly people who wouldn't normally have some of those experiences or opportunities. And for me, I always wanted the opportunity to be able to prove myself and take it from there. So the other things that I love about Manchester is just the city itself. Really diverse, lots of different cultures, really friendly people, some great buildings, which is on the top right, one of my favourite buildings is called Contact Theatre, brilliant space. And then in the centre, my biggest loves my wife and my two girls who are modelling their International Women's Day memorabilia. And they're my everyday reminder of women's rights and completely running my house. So I'm going to flip through and as I said, I'm going to move at a pace, but I'm going to share with you where this all started for us. Manchester is a city that if you've been there, you will know, or if you know some of the history, it's always been at the forefront of change, whether that's been to do with the being, having the first public library, having our football teams, which I'm going to skirt over because it's not been a good week for football for me personally. But we've been the birthplace of the suffragette movement with the home of Vimpso. So if anyone's a Vimpso lover out there, we're the home of Vimpso. But it's a, it's a city that's been at the forefront of creativity and innovation. And we have over half a million people in our city. And many of those residents who work for the council, we have a workforce of over 7,000 people. But we know that our organisation doesn't reflect the diversity of our city, particularly across different levels of our organisation. And that's been a lot of the, the driver behind some of the work that we needed to do. This started in some ways with a race review. Now, as an organisation, we've always worked on equality, diverse inclusion. We have the public sector equality duty. We have a quality diverse inclusion team. And I would say that that team is much more focused than our EDI within service delivery and our external work with residents. My team, which is the Talent and Diversity Team, was created on the back of a race review to look at workforce equality, diverse and inclusion. And it started with this race review. In 2018, the council commissioned the race review and the trade unions were quite instrumental in this because there were a number of disciplinary cases where there was a disproportionate number of black and Asian employees within the disciplinary and grievances. And there were other issues that happened in within terms of recruitment and selection practice, how staff were feeling, and this kind of triggered this commissioned independent race review. And what followed was an inquiry into our policies, our procedures, our practice, hearing from the voice of staff, the experience that people have been through. And that led to 27 recommendations, which are quite dominant, if I'm honest, about the council's approach to race equality. And our chief exec came out and owned that. And it was a difficult read, but was clear that, you know, we needed to do something about those messages. Essentially, it was saying that the council had been institutionally racist and it gave 27 recommendations of what we needed to do to improve. Rather than shy away from that, we, we, we looked at that and being honest, the murder of George Floyd probably accelerated some of that work. But a whole kind of cross-organisation race work programme was developed. We worked with people to look at some of the key priorities from that race review. And that led to a series of different pieces of work taking place. And our chief exec was very, very clear that we have to drive this forward because she wants the council to be a place that reflects the residents and we need to do more work to achieve that. So we had to listen, we had to learn, we held various workshops, speaking to staff, some of those staff in our equality networks, some of those staff in other forums or just engaging with people, including our elected members and trade unions. And it was a really big group effort where we had to listen, we have to learn, we had to respond and we had to keep going back to people to say, this is what we're hearing. What, what came from that is this kind of really stripped down, actually, often when we start thinking about workforce equality, we look at the protected characteristics or we look at different groups. But how does that come together? And then what staff start to say to us, actually, this is about the council being a place where everyone can be themselves and thrive. And that has become almost like the underpinning shot line, but more the mission and the approach that we've taken to the whole thing. If we can truly work from a place of striving towards everyone being themselves and thrive, what does that look like in our organisation? What is it that we would need to do? So the, the strategy came about by looking at those things. There were a number of key themes, like reflecting the communities that we served. But creating an environment and a space where we can talk more openly and frequently about equality and inclusion, not just in our staff equality networks, but through all, throughout our forums, throughout our engagement with staff, in our staff surveys, in our regular day-to-day conversations, what would that look like in the organisation? What would we need to, what would we need to do? Building an R learning and development offer, thinking much more beyond training, what does coaching look like? Mentoring, shadowing opportunities that allow people to move across the organisation. What would we need to do to make staff feel confident in bringing themselves to work without the fear of, you know, being discriminated against or reprised or consequence for speaking up about certain different things? And how would we reflect that in our policies? A lot came up about the role that managers and leaders need to play, how we need to support and equip those managers, but the critical role that managers and leaders play because of their interaction with our workforce. That was distilled down into six key strands. And all around how we were attracting, recruiting and developing people. How do we develop that talent both internally? How do we track it externally? How do we strengthen the visibility of our networks and our quality champions? What does zero tolerance look like? I think the thing with strategy is we often say these things and make these statements, but actually in practice, what was zero tolerance going to look like in our organisation? Because if I go back to the race review, there'd been a number of different disciplinary, disciplinary cases and grievances where zero tolerance didn't appear to exist. So if we were going to be bold and come out with this statement, what was that going to look like going forward in terms of how we would enact those things within our policies and procedures? And obviously accountability is going to be massive within that. So setting a monitoring target and having those measures to look at things and to go back to. So one of the things that we did really early that came out of the race review was we looked at the data around where the majority of our black and Asian employees were in our organisation. And it's no surprise, it's probably similar to a lot of other organisations, a large proportion of those staff are in the lower graded roles. And as you move up the structure, and we get to about grade nine, I don't know what grading system you use, but we get to about grade nine, middle management level. And that starts to see a significant drop off. If you progress in beyond middle management as a black person in our organisation, you are in a significant minority of people because that doesn't commonly happen. So we needed to think about what we were going to do to start to address that. And my colleague here who works in my team, Hader, he started to work with other colleagues to develop a leadership pathway programme. And that programme combines career coaching, mentoring, dialogue with strategic managers, inviting staff and the participants on this programme to go into environments that they usually wouldn't be in, to go and attend different forums, to be parts of different conversations and to actually meet strategic leaders and to find out more about their journey. So we ran a pilot last year for 12 individuals. And this really kind of took an intensive approach to work with those 12 individuals. We also ran a leadership programme for women of colour, working with someone called Sajda Far from the Institute of Change. She developed something called Lead Hership, which again, it looks at that kind of intersectional nuanced perspective and experience of women of colour in the organisation, which I'm sure you've seen a lot of the data and research around and the experiences of women of colour and the, the, the impact on their progression and the intersectional experience and that they have within organisations. So we delivered these two leadership pathway programmes. And on the women's programme, there was 20. On the first programme though, of, which was open to everyone, there was 12. And then quite quickly, with the support of our strategic management team, we started to see some results in terms of how we could align that with recruitment too. So those individuals on those, on those particular programmes talked about getting a better understanding, talked about being more equipped and increased confidence. On the leadership pathway programme, six out of 12 participants gained promotion within the first six months. And we're now committed to running that programme corporately twice a year. On the women's programme, really importantly, the women talked to us about not just professional, but the personal confidence that they were able to grow and develop and, and the ownership and claiming of their own narrative and thinking and believing that they will be able to apply for senior roles, but also how they could be the leaders that we need in the organisation. And we went from a position where a lot of those individuals thought that they couldn't apply or have the confidence to apply for those roles, to over 93% of them being able to comfortably apply for roles. And to date, seven of those 20 people have gained promotion. And it wasn't just about promotion, it was about those people having the belief that they could be the leaders in the organisation that could help to bring around change, but they could see themselves in the organisation too. So those programmes have been committed to for the next three years. But I was really, really clear with our strategic management team, with our full council, with everybody else. This is not just about developing black and Asian staff. And actually, we need to move away from this idea that we have to fix the black people or we have to fix the Asian and black and Asian people, people of colour, whatever terminology you're using. A lot of times what happens with strategy like this is we focus on the people of colour or we focus on the disabled people. But actually, what is happening in the rest of the organisation? What are some of the systemic issues in the rest of the organisation? And if we are going to bring about change, we needed to look at our policies and our procedures and our practice and some of the leadership that was happening. So we broadened that out. We said that all of our leaders and the top tier of our organisation would and access and be expected to access and contribute to an inclusive leadership programme that was delivered by an organisation of purple fusion called Purple Fusion. This is a screenshot of some of the feedback we started to get on this programme. But it was a really, a really important programme because it started to look at, how do you, how, how do you perform as an inclusive leader? What are some of your own biases? What are some of the things that you need to address for yourself? How do you move that into, to, to action and leading in a way that is much more inclusive with your services and as leaders? And what are you going to do within your personal equality, quality objectives to help drive this work forward? So that was a really important thing. And to date, we've had over 356 of probably just over 450 senior leaders in the organisation complete that course. And as I said, that, that programme is now attached to senior equality objectives which we introduced. This is a, I suppose, I don't think my chief exec's going to be happy with this screenshot, but it's a screenshot of our chief exec introducing something called Let's Talk About Race Team Conversation. So actually, moving away from an e-learning programme and actually having conversations about race, you know, systemic racism, white privilege, bias, tokenism, but bringing that together in a team conversation that focuses on action planning to move us forward. We also done some work that looked at our policies and procedures. A big part of that was saying to people that abuse and harassment was not part of the job. Because again, a lot of our staff were experiencing that and just seeing it as the norm. We worked on our employee dispute resolution policy. We, we broadened our special leave policy because it had a quite narrow definition of immediate family. So we know culturally or for other reasons that people sometimes have responsibilities for family members and may need to travel, but we used to have a really narrow definition within our special leave policy about when that could be used. So we, we worked on that and we broadened that out. We've, we've attached our disciplinary policy to our zero tolerance statement. And now any form of discrimination is deemed as a serious misconduct that will go to a senior manager and then it will be heard in that basis. This has kind of been something that we're still trying to push and get people to, to kind of utilise some of these policy changes. Because obviously, day-to-day people's experiences won't always be feeling the, the changes in those policies. We, we've worked on our menopause policy, introducing the menopause policy because we didn't have one before and now have a strong kind of working group of probably around 100, 150 women who are really supporting us as an organisation to kind of embed that menopause policy and that support to managers and leaders. Again, as I'm, and I'm moving quite swiftly through this so we can get into some conversation. But we introduced something called a diverse panel app. And really, this is about diverse recruitment. And I think this is one of the learning points I want to share with everybody, actually. I think we need to do better in this area because what we did is we mandated and that all recruitment processes have to have diverse panels in terms of gender and race as a minimum. But what we didn't do and what we haven't done enough yet from my perspective is we haven't communicated enough to the organisation and to the workforce about why? Why do we want diversity or for? Why do we want diverse perspectives? Why do we want a diverse panel involved in the process? So whilst we've created this app, which is great, it allows anyone in the organisation to register on the app, fill in a profile, provide consent for their, for their data to be shared. Behind the scenes, the algorithm works and it highlights, you know, who has a protected characteristic. And at any point, a manager can go onto that app and try and identify someone who could be on their, their, their recruitment episode. And it, and it's had some positives where people who have never been involved in recruitment before said it's been a brilliant development opportunity. But the flip side of that has been some people have just kind of tried to find the holy grail of a black, disabled, lesbian woman the day before or a couple of days before we're recruiting. And actually, that's not what it was about. Inclusive recruitment and diverse recruitment isn't about just finding someone at the end of, at, at the end of the process. It's actually about involving people from the beginning, from before you've even put the advert out, in the design of the questions, in the design of the assessment process, in the design of how you're going to help people to give their best selves in that interview process. So we're doing some more work and campaigns around what does inclusive recruitment look like? Why do we have diverse recruitment? What do diverse perspectives bring to our organisation? And I'm hoping that will help us to strengthen the mandate that we put out. A few more slides I'm going to skip through. It was about visibility of staff. This came from the race programme, having much more imagery and stories from staff in the organisation that show people of colour and show the diverse makeup. That's been broadened out, not just from a race perspective, but to show staff from all different walks of life and backgrounds within our imagery, both internally and externally. So a lot of this took place through Covid where our internal comms team were reaching out to communities, but they started to vary and use much more, much different imagery and individuals to communicate some of the messages and it just landed better. People thought they could connect to people who, who look like them or who they could understand and resonate with their story. And we've also kind of carried that work on to support and strengthen our employee staff groups who provide a lot of that voice and engagement and might provide some of those stories. But we now have a number of, what you can see is a screenshot here of our internet page. My team support all of our different equality networks now, of which you can see we have a number over 50s group, pregnancy impairing group, women's equality network, LGBT plus group. We have a mental health group. We now have an emerging young people's group that unfortunately I'm too old to be a part of. But we are supporting those groups and we have, as an organisation, given all employees a minimum of a day a month or the equivalent in hours to attend those, those groups. And if people who are running those groups, because they are independent groups run by staff, have two days or the equivalent of hours to lead those groups, develop the work programmes and the offer to the rest of the staff. So we've really tried to connect all our different things together in terms of our voice, our engagement, our policy and procedure, our comms and our behaviours, because our behaviours have been critical. Similar to your organisation, I'm sure you'll have values and behaviours that you use across your organisation and we're no different. We used to have four, which were about working together and trusting each other and being passionate about your city, trying things and not being afraid to try things, but listening. And there's an argument to say that equality, diverse and inclusion is implicit within all those things. But what staff told us is that they wanted something more explicit. They wanted a behaviour that was actually very explicit about valuing differences and treating people fairly. So we created a new behaviour and that cuts across our inductions, it goes across our appraisal process. We use that in supervision, we're thinking about that in terms of our corporate planning and strategic plans. That cuts across all of our different organisational behaviours. And the message that we always say is, it's not necessarily just about what you're doing, it's how you're doing it. How are you treating people differently and fairly? And the work that we've got to do now is to embed this new behaviour because it's quite new and fresh within the organisation. But again, that came from staff saying, we need to be much stronger and have this focus around valuing differences, but treating people fairly and being really action focused in how we do that. So as I said, we've made some progress, but we know that there's still a lot of work to do. I think that's a glass half full or half empty, depending on the way you look at things. But we definitely know that there's been progress and there's work to do. For example, if we looked at the makeup of our city, we know the two areas that have our biggest gaps are around race and disability. With currently our residents, it's 37%, but actually it is higher than that with the latest figures that we've got. And 21% of our staff are represented within the organisation based upon the data that we have so far. Disability likewise, that is a much lower number from a workforce perspective. So these are two of the areas that we've drafted into our targets over the next five years to see year in year increases in, in these areas whilst having a maintaining watch on the other protective characteristics too. So our next steps are to continue the work that we've been doing, to continue to learn, to be open to making mistakes and learning from those and acting quickly to, to back up and put our money where our mouth is in terms of the bold statements we've said and commitments we give to our staff. In terms of some specifics, we are now working on a disability and disability workplace adjustments hub, and which we're potentially looking at workplace passports. And we're doing a whole piece of work around disability equality and inclusion within the workforce. We've got a piece of work at the moment, which is around trans inclusion. And this came from trans members of staff, particularly one individual that started this piece of work where their experience of working in the organisation and their dead name coming up on the system just kept happening over and over again. And despite managers working to support this individual, they just would be constantly repeated whether they went to go and change their badge or get something to do with their pay, being reminded of their dead name and not being supported and in embracing who that person is and who that person, how that person wants to be seen in the organisation and how they identify. We just made, we're doing what we needed to do. So that piece of work is underway and we've broadened that out to have a much more of a trans inclusion and awareness training programme and learning opportunities where staff can, can gain a better understanding and not just think about the system, things that they need to do, but also how we support trans employees and other people within the workforce to feel like they can bring their whole selves to work. So there's a number of other things that we're doing. We're going to do another push on our monitoring because I don't know if, like you, the monitoring, you know, people filling the monitoring data and we've been encouraging them to, but they want to have confidence in what's being done with it. They want to see some of these changes. So we're going to have another push on our equality monitoring and getting staff to fill in that data. So we can continue to see the progress that we're making. But we can start to tell the stories about through how that data has been shared with us. This is what has led us to doing and how it's made improvements. So just some key takeaways and I'll finish there because I'm conscious of time. We've probably got one minute left. I would say, and collectively across the organisation, it has been a big effort. But you can only really make those improvements if you're listening to staff and if you're understanding people's experience and you're co-designing with that change with employees. It's not just about one change. You need multiple routes and policies and action and behaviours and monitoring and the voice of staff to come together all at the same time. If you're just doing one thing and then you're only focusing on that thing, we know what local authorities can be like. We, we move on very quickly, but this is about a long-term kind of ambition. And all those things need to be happening at the same time. And I would say you've just really got to keep up the momentum, particularly when people start running out of steam or fatigue. Planning for those periods and what you need to do when, when that happens is really critical. So that's been a bit of a whistle stop tour. And you know, some of the evidence of why this is important, I'm going to have to just park for now. But we, we know that, you know, when we have diverse workforces, we, we're more productive. And we see better results. And these are what some of these last slides are just highlighting. Working with people who are similar to you might feel great, but can just produce the same average results. And that's what we're trying to avoid. So thank you. And this is a definitely to be continued. Happy for people to contact us to learn a bit more about some of the specifics. And I'm going to stop sharing and, and thank you. It's been a bit strange because I can't see people, but I hope that's been informative and we will pick up whatever's in the chat and respond to people if we can.
Okay. So thank you very much, Michael and Amy. I know you've been trying to catch up with some of the chats. Some very interesting questions in there. And I think as we say, we're just running out of time. But I'm sure we'll follow up on those and the information for everyone, even though you've just raised a question. Will be shared with everyone after the session. and the information for everyone, even though you've just raised a question, will be shared with everyone after the session. So sorry, we've not had a chance to answer those today. And this is one burning one that's not in the chat. Anyone wants to raise? Don't like to miss out on anyone. No. So again, thank you very much, Michael and Amy. Very insightful webinar. And I hope you have learnt something from it and we will share the information. Just leaves me to say, we've got a further webinar next Friday. So again, if you're interested in these webinars, please do register. And the next one next week is with Veridus around inclusive recruitment. Again, it's at 12 till 12.30. So thank you very much, everybody. And as we said, we'll follow up on the chat questions and have a lovely weekend. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. We'll follow up on those chats. Definitely happy to respond to those questions.
Fantastic. Thanks, Michael.